Order. Seven thirty-five P M. Had the notice of this meeting had been arrived in what section three B and two thirty-one public calls and I think seventy-five. I only know this time down. All call.
Paul Mear.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson.
Here.
Ken Shalat.
Here.
Grace Anne Kelly.
Here.
Philip Bellin.
Here.
Ryan Messinger.
Here.
Jose Maderas.
Here.
Brad Nelson. Jeff Paletti.
Here.
Steve Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Daniel McDonald.
Here.
Kara Kaczynski.
He said. And please rise to the class.
What? Flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, will be justice for all.
Okay. Like the like the motion for the public or agenda in public comments, please.
Thank you.
Those in favor.
Aye.
In public comment. Motion closed, move. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Was that something? Or yeah?
Ah, was you though, wasn't it?
No, it was that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I heard a noise. Apparently, I heard it. Where? Uh, T R A ordinances, master plan consistency. We didn't have to change the goal from the last time that we dealt with these, right?
No.
And there's, and we go to the wall, I think.
And they went to put like one. Yeah. Nothing.
Yeah.
You really can't change.
Right, yeah, you're just modeling what you guys got.
Yeah.
I mean, can we do them all at once?
We did it committee. When we introduce.
Can, yeah, you could do them all at once unless there's any that any particular member wants to remove and do individually. Um, but just like Judy said, there really can't be many changes, if any at all. Um, they're going to be consistent or at least substantially consistent with your master plan because they are required by the D E P. And master plan must be consistent with the state requirements. Um, so it's pretty simple, but if anyone wants to pull any out and do it individually, that's fine.
Do we ever get an answer back on the tree ordinance? We don't have it. By default, did you remember?
We haven't gotten a fin- we haven't gotten a final answer, but I I believe that it sounded like um most likely they would be accepting our our tree ordinance in exchange for theirs.
So. So this this is all of them except for that?
Correct, and there there they issued two more. Uh, technically, they did give us an extension on these, but I'd like to get them done before the end of the year. I am meeting with uh the E P uh at the League of Municipalities this week. Um, nothing's gonna change, but maybe there's some possible funding options. Uh, so uh uh. We our surrounding communities have all passed these and and so it's uh pretty obvious that we should comply at this point. I'm just trying to find some additional funding sources for us.
Alright, so. All of the T R A ordinances, we've got the tree ordinance. We must do. Forty-two, twenty, twenty-three, and our art place. Ordinance four eighty-three, twenty twenty-three, pet waste. Ordinance four eighty-four, twenty twenty-three, private still agreeing in that pressure fitting. Four eighty-five, twenty twenty-three, wildlife feeding. Ordinance four eighty-six, twenty twenty-three, illicit netting ordinance. Forty-seven, twenty twenty-three, improper disposal of waste. Four eighty-eight, twenty twenty-three, private neon install storage. Forty-nine, twenty twenty-three, refuse container and dumpster. And four ninety, twenty twenty-three. Um. Is amending chapter one of six three. That we need to use. Being not consistent of our master plan.
You take a motion that accordance four eighty-two through four ninety intensive. Um, are.
Yeah.
Not inconsistent with our method.
Second.
Great, second. Any further discussion? All those there? Aye.
Aye.
Not any more. Yes. Ben. Yes. Bill, against any extension? Right. Promising law, I adjust resolution. Point three dash ten.
Make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, as ready.
Done. Ben, back then, any further discussion? All call. Have they members that were in?
I was here. Here. I was.
Phil. You're. I was.
Yeah.
I think Daniel.
I wasn't here, but I'll be giving my vote.
Okay. Paul Mear.
Yes.
Jose Reyes.
Yes.
Grace Anne Kelly.
Yes.
Ryan Messinger.
Yes.
Jose Maderas.
Yes.
Philip Bellin.
Yes.
Ken Shalat.
Yes.
Jeff Paletti.
Yes.
Um, Steve Di Lorenzo.
We're doing the same.
Monica, I'll go ahead and insert the actual votes of who was there tonight, and I'll shoot that back to you.
Okay, so eight yeses and one uh and yeah, eight yeses is what we have. Did you need nine? I thought it was nine.
No, no, it. Nine are allowed to vote, but the people that were there and voted in a um. Favor of the resolution and the application are the ones that voted on the resolution.
Okay, great.
That makes sense, so that 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 issue goes out the window.
Okay. We have uh subject review, block twelve, lot ion two. Wherever that here.
Well, I'm here, my name is Steve Parker, I'm here just to answer any questions if the board has them, or I can make a presentation if you like.
I can just come on up. Kara, just uh. The engineer is here. It's bad and disgusting. This isn't a here and it's just we were. Uh, we're going through letter, can you just give us that? And we got a higher order.
Yep, this is a septic system operation that was generated as a result of a home sale. Uh, inspection, the home sales already occurred, so the new owner is living in the home. Uh, part of the transaction was that the septic system get corrected, and so we retained the prepared design, we would now perform some tests on the property. Um, it's a small lot, somewhat of a small lot, so there's really uh the only available area for in the is in the backyard because the well is in the front yard. And so when you take into account a hundred foot setback, the only spot that's remaining is in the backyard. We did some tests in the backyard, it's wet back there, um, so we found groundwater less than twenty-four inches from the surface. Um, anytime that occurs, the state health code, uh, while they only allow that in cases of alteration, not allowed for new construction. Um, and so if, uh, and so this this board being the administrative authority has to grant the approval for that. Um, and what we've done is we've designed a separate system to account for that, excuse me, using an advanced treatment unit. We're providing minimum separation distances between the highest groundwater level and the bottom of the zone, or top of zone treatment. Um, with the uh, in this case, it's the cocoa filter, advanced treatment unit and um. So that's about as high uh over there as you give it.
It's gonna be raised.
It is a raised system, yeah, even though we're we're, so the advanced treatment unit allows you to reduce the height of that zone of treatment. Um, and we've done that in this case, um, but it's still gonna be a racist and because the groundwater is so shallow, so close to the surface. I think we have it at like six eighteen inches from the um, from the surface. Um, so it is still gonna be amounted to, in this case, uh, the ground slopes toward the backyard, so it's it's gonna. I mean, I'm not gonna say you're not gonna see it, but it's gonna slope down, create a level spot and slope off the backside again a little further. So it is technically a mounted system, yeah.
I assume all the buildings.
Well, we looked around the rest of the property also, and so the only other area is further back in the lot, and it's even wetter back there because there's water on the top of the ground. Uh, when we find it, so the spot we picked is about as close as we can get uh to the back of the house without getting too close to the. Um, so yeah, it's the it's the best spot that's out there. And by the way, this is, this is a three bedroom house, there is no expansion, not allowed to be an expansion because uh of the non-conforming conditions that are there. Uh, so it'll remain as a three bedroom house. Um, and uh, this system will improve, is an improvement over what's there now. Uh, and it will get the system closer to conforming to the code requirements than the current system is now.
Where is this system now?
It's in the backyard, it's right behind the house, it's, the new system is gonna be a little further beyond that.
It's gonna require any special uh maintenance.
Well, all advanced treatment systems require an annual inspection, so they have to be inspected once a year. Um, and then those are reported and provided to the health department as well. It, this is no different than that, um, this has an annual inspection requirement, they're gonna come out and look, the, are you playing with the um. The uh, the cocoa units are just basically like a big septic tank, it's filled with, in this case, coconut husks. Um, and that provides the higher level of treatment, so those get inspected and looked at, uh, to verify that it's functioning properly. There's really no mechanical parts to this, there's no blowers uh or other pumps like some of the other systems that are out there. Um, but it does require an inspection and it needs to be looked at every year.
That has to get pumped out?
It will, uh, over time, right now, they're saying they last about twelve to fifteen years. And then like any filter, as it gets used, it does get plugged up, and so so what happens is those get removed by a, by a, you know, regular septic holder, they can suck them out. And they just put the new coconut husk back in.
We have a alert, um, Vanquish, I'll try to go. Tom does recommend uh board transparency on us. So four year ago, we produced a proven. The recommendation of the forward engineer and that letter dedicated November sixth. Okay, question please. The letter Vanquish, letter dated November sixth, one hundred and three for the septic operations on block twelve. Lot nine, four zero two.
Make motion that we accept the recommendation from Vanquish. Block twelve, lot nine, four zero two. And that is brand relief of the. Requirement. Second.
Who is the second on that?
He's.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Was there?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Ben.
Thank you very much. Good night everyone.
You need a moment to open to the public for a general comment?
Second.
All those there?
Aye.
Aye.
We have any, anybody in the public or on Zoom that would like to make any comments or questions? Close?
Wait, you can close the seconds?
All those there?
Aye. Someone just put their hand up?
No, that's the cursor. If the meeting ends October twenty-third. Twenty twenty-third.
Just one correction, I'm I'm listed as present and acting. I was at. Here and not. Somebody was feeling that. I'm not here, like.
Stay that moment. It's like a parrot, just from.
I'll take the motion. Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the uh meeting minutes of October twenty-third, uh, if they're right. I have a question. See? The uh. The conditions, will they be on the deed or how the the?
That's that's what we want, yeah. That's what the discussion was, that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna be a review. And I want to split a copy. We get kind of, we see where it is.
Thank you.
That's all for the resolution.
Yeah.
Correct, it's all outlined in there, uh, we get a copy ahead of time to take a look at, Tom and I. Um, both of the easement revisions as well as the subdivision deeds, and then they will each be recorded. Uh, with regard to the particular lots along with a copy of the resolution and the conditions. So everybody will be on notice of what's going on, and that the M R zoning requirements are going to apply to that lot.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes. Start of October twenty-third, twenty-three, uh, with one correction. Uh, I'm moving in. Okay. Second.
Any further discussion? All those there?
Aye.
Against? That's passion.
Same.
Same.
Merr.
I don't have anything um directly land use related, just an update, uh, we did receive an N J D O T grant uh for Willover um. Road which completes the Fox Farm development, so next year we'll be repaving uh that entire development. And we'll continue to ask for N J D O T funds to work on other developments uh as they're um on our priority list throughout the township. And then I had a discussion, again, kind of tangential to land use as we uh potentially look at our home-based business ordinance next year. We had a conversation this morning with J C P and L. Uh, they uh are applying to the V P U for, I'm gonna say, a very minor rate increase, uh, that the township committee. Um, is looking into potentially supporting because it is uh going to be an extensive. Uh, upgrade to our uh electrical system here in Bethlehem Township, uh, they're going to be upgrading both substations. Adding in all of the modern circuits and fuse breakers that they can control remotely. Uh, I'll be sharing the details uh pretty soon, but it was uh. Uh, I I for, I think it was a a impressive um investment they're gonna be making with within Bethlehem Township and our surrounding area to hardy our electrical system.
Electric just block.
Go a bit more. Now, if if. I think it's early. Mr. London, Mr. London, he posted something uh somewhere just around four bucks a month. Uh.
Yeah, it won't, and it's uh, it'll be phased in over multiple quarters, so it'll, the ultimate will be four dollars a month, uh, but probably over the course of three years to get there. Maybe a little less, but I I'll be able to share the details possibly by Thursday night's meeting, uh, for our township committee meeting.
Judy.
I just wanted to thank Monica for working um very hard on getting the master plan. Uh, the full master plan on the website, and thank you to Lou too. Uh, thing was a little painful, and so I appreciate Monica figuring it out and helping through all of our files and digital and otherwise. So it comes in a compliment. That's it.
Right. Um, so yeah, so the board mentioned the home-based business, uh, there's. Um, so the county put a decent amount of funding into a um. A deep dive on on what home-based businesses should look like or could look like in hundred counting. Um, then they took hours that we currently have existing, and they basically, you know. Pulled it apart or suggested some additions to it, um, of what we might or might not like or might not like. So um, to to kind of bring us in older towns, um, similar to us. So I, I think there'll be some, I I read through a lot of, a lot of recommendations. I don't, I haven't talked all about it yet, but there's some that I don't. I don't particularly care for, it's gonna uh. There's some suggestions that'll basically make some of our revenue priorities, you know, a little bit more commercial. Or uh. Uh, I don't know if we, if we want that, that's not to be stuff that's discussed. Um, and there were limitations, and again, we can still do what we choose, it's just accounting for the money out for it, so. Um, now, and and they work with with our one seventy-three quarter, um, five seventy-nine trail. Now, for the, for the, the uh. For the wineries and for the food and stuffs, which actually goes to our town some. Um, so that'll be something next year for sure.
Giving that to the subcommittee?
Yes. Send to the subcommittee, we're not gonna do work on it all next year, so that we can start. Um. Start looking at it, in fact, I think send the uh. Send what county did to actually everybody. Just so they can at least look at it and get it.
Yeah, we do it, next year we might have a different group of people on there, we're gonna subcommittee.
Yeah. Sounds good, let everybody look at it, again, master plan is out now, so we need to create a job for us and. Stuff for for that also, so. Just putting that out to everybody who's having a read through. And launch inspections back here on the subject. Any other board members have anything?
A quick one, is it there, I mean?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, somehow the uh environmental commission meetings have been taken off the township website. Can that be put back on? When they're held, so so people know when they are held.
Sure, just get me the info, I'll put it, be happy to put it up.
Okay, great.
Anything else? If you want a better intro or a new intro for the part, that part of the site, just send it along and take care of it, absolutely.
Okay, for the time being. For the time being, just uh put the date, which is the third Tuesday of the month. And we'll deal with the other other stuff later.
Okay, and Jose, if you, if uh, if you agree, maybe Lou, um, put a notice with the the meeting that um. You know, the environmental commission is looking for members, um, so if they're interested in checking out a meeting and then interested in joining to to reach out to me for appointment.
Yeah.
It's seven thirty, by the way.
The third Tuesday of the month, seven thirty.
Seven thirty, third Tuesday of the month.
Question's good.
Of course.
Thank you.
We'll call you first. My grand, anything?
Um, subcommittee meeting?
Yeah. For the sub, the uh, the master plan subcommittee met uh last Tuesday. And uh, and we went over the rest of the uh suggestions. And uh, so I think most of the things that we looked at were fairly non-controversial. There's some questions as to um what we should do with the R O M, because the R O M doesn't really work as an R O M in England through the flora ratio. So there was some discussion as to increasing the flora ratio. Um, but that doesn't seem to, I don't think that's gonna work well with the with the Highlands. So there was some other talk about like doing away with the research and office part of it, maybe manufacturing, but also expanding it a little bit to. Um, maybe include things like gas stations or things like that, but yeah, that's something that the whole, the whole committee would have to, the whole playbook would have to discuss. Um, uh, the the one thing that did come up was some suggestions for um dealing with the um, with the manining property. And, you know, the thing that we all have to remember is that that property is a grandfathered property. Um, so anything that we do affecting Route one seventy-three is going to affect that particular, that particular property. But that's already grandfathered, I mean, um, I guess we could um. You know, incorporate the full zoning, you know, do away with the split zone there. Uh, but again, that was not something that we discussed, it's not, that's something for the entire board to discuss, if I can. Uh, but again, you know, everything that was was proposed by um, by the applicant was basically grandfathered. Um, luckily, he had torn down one of the batch plants and and uh, and actually asked for a tax uh reduction because of that. Pretty much in life, it's all the abandoned. Uh, so that that use was abandoned, but there are, I believe, one other, there's one other batch plant that's still there. But we don't know what could happen with that one, have to do that with the, once the courts decide what our mandate is going to be. Um, but I think that whatever. But I think that whatever, in my opinion, whatever happens on that property. It's critical that, you know, all the property around it be well insulated from whatever happens. But again, what, what happens on one seventy three shouldn't be tailored towards looking at that. Because, you know, again, that's, that's grandfathered piece of property. So whatever happens.
And just so everyone, just so everyone understands too, you know, you're looking at this in connection with master plan. And what's going to be best going forward for the town and with regard to those, those split zone types of. Properties like the one we were dealing with, with the subdivision. What happens with regard to the litigation or anything else, it should be separate and apart. And, you know, that will proceed in its way and whatever happens there would have been subject to the prior zoning anyway. But, you know, certainly when things like this come about, they should be considered in connection with your master plan review and recommendations. But they would be separate and apart from what it is you're doing in connection with your master plan recommendations and changes.
Eric is. We're thinking about, about, I mean, the property that Jose bought up, but. Every town out there and we're no exception, you, you always have a residential area which is gun to the butt. And whether it's a commercial, whether it's an industrial. Is it, is there wording that we can put in that? That, I'm not saying noise barriers, but is there a way that we can word our master plan? In these areas where. Where we try to come up with a. A delineation line of understanding that, you know, residents want their peace and tranquility. And understand that certain properties are abutting. Areas that, that can create a. A challenge. Is there a way we can word it, i- is it something that would be, that we could do, that's why to do, that's needed? Where any development that happens on any. Commercial industrial property takes into account. The, the residential dwellings around it and vice versa.
There's two ways you can do that. First of all, estate noise requirements would apply across the board regardless of what we're talking about. And that can always be a condition of approval to say that the applicant has to do a as-built noise study. And that has to comply with the state noise requirements. That being said, sometimes they may be a little higher than what may be appropriate adjacent to a residential dwelling. There could be increased screening requirements. When some of these uses do abut residential properties, I've seen that. The ordinance and the permitted uses could also be drafted in such a way where. They are, you know, you have a conditional use that has certain requirements, again, if it abuts a residential property. As opposed to being right smack in the middle of a commercial or industrial zone. Those are probably the most common ways that I've seen. I'm happy to talk to Megan and see, you know, what else she might have found and, you know, how we could do that, but. You know, what you're trying to achieve is not new, it's not novel, and you're right unless, you know, the. Boundary lines of your zones are all abutted by streets, you're always gonna have a situation where. One zone is going to butt another and, and a lot of times residential but. Commercial and industrial, especially right along that area that you're talking about right there. So those would, like I said, be the two most common ways that I've seen. But happy to talk to Megan, see what else we could find, you know, come up with regarding. Language.
You know, one of the things we've talked about as a subcommittee, you know, aside from, you know, any specific properties, just in general, looking at the master plan. And the character of the township. We wanted to make sure that there was a lot of emphasis put on maintaining the rural, rural characteristics of, of a township and obviously protecting natural resources. That are, that are here, and that really creates sort of an overarching theme to the, to the master plan, we wanted to try and incorporate. In the, or in, in the language that's there. And even aside from, you know, the, the highway commercial zone or industrial zones, you know, we mentioned before, we had a. Prevention of home based business, so I think, you know, thinking about how people utilize their properties. And how some people may want to use them for businesses, it really applies far beyond just those particular zones. You know, we really wanna make sure that we're maintaining that, you know, characteristic, that very sort of natural environment for, for the entire community.
So one of the things that we kind of thrown around was the possibility of doing away with the R O M completely. And just making it all highway commercial. But what we kind of realized is that by keeping the highway commercial, which tends to be more surrounded by residential neighborhoods. We can limit the uses in the highway commercial zone and push it more down towards the R O M zone. Which tends to be more away from. Properties, residential properties. So that's why we kind of threw out the idea of doing away with the R O M completely and, and making everything highway commercial. So if we tighten up the uses in the highway commercial, so that, you know, as, as Cara was saying. Make more things conditional uses that we can then control to make sure that they don't affect neighbors. And, you know, by having the R O M, we're not zoning out everything so that we don't get sued for having exclusionary zoning. We have a place where, where businesses like that, that are a little bit more intensive can go. Without impacting residential area. So I think that by, you know, keeping that, changing that a little bit and pushing more, you know. Businesses that would be a little more impactful to neighbors, moving them into that area, allowing them in that area. Which still isn't gonna allow much because of the, the Highlands. But then we can also use that to tighten up our highway commercial to restrict things that make a lot of noise. Businesses that are running twenty-four seven and things like that, you know.
And we've just had, been a couple of years where it's, it's kind of the, you know. The, the two camps is up against them, them against us, you know, it's, we shouldn't be necessarily. Up in arms with any commercials, you know, any, any commercial, you know, proprietor, you know, as they actually help this town out a lot. You know, and not sending any kids to school and they're pending for local taxes. And, and so a lot of times, you know, it's, you see a lot of, you know, negativity around it and, and, you know. We have them zones and it'd be nice if we could get things organized in such a way that, that, you know, we, we all can live in. I could say harmony, probably the wrong, you know.
It's actually true that it's harmony.
But, you know, keep it so that, you know, everybody's happy, you know, keeping, you know, the. The stuff of, you know, the stuff that needs to save the residences away or as mitigated, you know. That's something I would be looking.
Whatever business you open up, you need customer.
Which is over for the, for the season.
Yeah, but you, you almost need another before, you know, it's like years ago, they were talking about a. Satellite hospital or something like that, you need something.
Yeah, over the years, I think, and, you know, Paul can speak about it also, but I mean, we've had. From, you know. You know, a, a site committee for, you know, nuclear waste, that was years ago, to schools and satellite hospitals and.
Well, economic planning, right, you're saying that we're trying to get warehouses, yeah, how long ago was that, twenty years ago?
Yeah, that was when warehouses were popular.
But we went nowhere with that. That would have threw more people to that area where you could have put maybe a sandwich shop or something like that, you put a sandwich shop there, yeah, you'd be out of business in a week. What, what can we put there? That's, I can't figure that.
Unfortunately, that, you know. You have to start getting like businesses coming in to attract other businesses coming in. You know, that, that's, you have to, you have to start building up, you know, that, that.
You have the anchor, like he's talking about, yeah.
So what we're getting, we got. A mechanic there, you know, close to Boomsburg, you've got Masbrado, excavator. The mayor has his shop up there, you know, that's the kind of things we have, and that's the kind of things I think we'll be getting.
Well, I mean, I, I don't foresee us, you know, anymore getting big sort of things that would. That would attract the, you know.
It would have to be something like the satellite hospital or something.
But even that, I don't, I don't think that, that the Highlands would allow something like that in there, because again, a, a hospital, any kind of hospital. Is gonna, yeah, it's gonna need a sewage treatment plant. And so we don't allow sewage treatment plants, so that's not gonna happen, you know, the, the reason that we were, that we were talking about warehouses. Because warehouses are huge buildings that bring in a lot of money because they're, they're valued. For not all of the employees, but they don't have a lot of employees, so you can get away with the septic system, it doesn't affect your co obligations as bad. You know, there was a lot of different reasons for that, but, you know, if we were to suggest bringing in warehouses in here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I would also add, besides Highlands and our own zoning, there's infrastructure hurdles too, because. Similar to a satellite hospital, we have somebody looking at a continuous care facility, which would be. Popular and, and maybe a good use, so it was, you know, independent living and then assisted and then a full nursing home, but they, they needed a. Gas service, that's why we had on the website, you know, if people were interested in, in having gas service, so between the, the septic, water. Potential needs for, for natural gas, there's a lot of hurdles to, to consider when we look at the, the zoning up and down the one seventy three quarter.
But to be fair, I mean, if you go down the other side of the mountain, there are businesses that are relatively successful, jerseys, the liquor store, John County higher, I mean, there's. There's businesses that are doing well, right, I mean, at least.
Before we had the park, were a few people on this side of the town that live on this side, one on the other. Yeah, it's, it's the way it is.
Again, parks, I mean, the park is, is a big draw.
You know, people would say, oh, that's still about that area.
Yeah, and one, one thing that we have turned away quite a few times. Is any sort of a gas station slash truck stop. In Bethlehem Township, just beside of, of, of the highway. And I know that that's not very popular with people, but the truth of the matter is if we did something and we could allow something like that there. It would probably alleviate some of the problems that we have now with all the overcrowding of the one truck stop, kind of spreading it out a little bit so that. Making sure that, that the trucks get off the road into some kind of a parking lot. But even at that, you know, even just a gas station wasn't allowed to, to go in there by Highlands. So, you know, that's something that, you know, you have to be able to, you have to be able to get through the Highlands rules to, to. Do anything like that, but if, you know, if that's something that, that we could possibly get through, I think it would solve. A lot of the problems that are down there, because right now, you have all the trucks concentrated on one side, they all get jammed up there. If you could spread them out to both sides of the highway, you know, you, you could probably alleviate a lot of the things that, that drive people nuts down there. Being that we get off the highway and being all those trucks jammed up on one seventy three. But, but again, that's gonna take some courage.
Restaurant or something like that, but see, you've got multiple restaurants now, you've got money waters, you've got Spain, you've got jerseys. You know, just starting to develop that type of an area as a place where you wanna go out to dinner, you've got three or four places to go out to or five places to go out to. Where, again, you'd have turnover, you know, okay, this place is crowded, I could go to the next one, something like that. You know, turn it to a destination to go out to dinner, it's like, okay, let's.
We're, we're only allowed some liquor licenses. You can, I don't know how well B Y O B would do out here, I would envision more ecotourism out here. Why not get an indoor flea market?
Well, that was actually something we thought about, was ecotourism and understand, that's actually something that we, uh.
Yeah, antique, similar to like, you know, you go outside of New, New Hope. Not in New Hope, but the town surrounding, they have the, they have the antique malls, you can do a flea market, you can have a craft. Type of place and you wanna preserve the rural mark, rural nature of the town and then. I don't, I don't.
Watch the house there for.
Yeah, and then, then I, I moved down here and I wanted, I could have my tan.
That's the original, the range.
Yeah, that was there.
Yeah, I mean, so we did bring up ecotourism. So, so the problem is, is that ecotourism is kind of a misnomer, because ecotourism has a very. Very strict definition, and it's basically, you know, so it's, it's more like. Ecotourism is more like biking the trails and down.
Or watching wildlife observation.
Yes, you have the businesses that roam around something like that.
And I don't think you need to get too caught up in the definition.
Yeah, illegalist, legalistic about it.
Right, I mean, I think the, the concept is generally the same, is, you know, maybe to promote those types of businesses, uh, because. That's kind of what we're in the track, but maybe a little relief from the Highlands from the state. Years ago, they were here and they said they were gonna help us on one seventy three.
Help us, help us.
I think that if we, if we went to them and with some sort of a plan, to develop on one seventy three, they would help.
Like I said, the Highlands did, the funding had run out in twenty twenty, uh, we can reapply, they were interested in funding a, an economic development study. So they would give us some idea. They, they did a rather successful one for Hybridge, a little bit different, but it was, I think, successful for them. And then the, the Highlands themselves are definitely. I'd say more involved in economic development than they had been in the past, realizing that, that, that there's, I would say a balance, but there's. Uses that can be had there, so I think they'd be a great partner in this, the new executive director, Ben Spinelli. Definitely understands proper planning and I think they would be a useful partner and maybe we reapproach them for some funding.
Well, one of these medical offices too, just the pretty bad dorm, Phil said, it's not actually a satellite hospital. But they're spraying up everywhere, the medical offices, urgent little, well, right, exactly, things that would be the same Luke Hunter Ten. And they want these little ones, they've even bought up in our town, some of the little areas that used to be private doctors, they bought that up. The, also the rehab, you're, you are getting patients in. And maybe that wanna stop at a grocery store on the way out, but for P T O T. And what happens is they don't take a lot of water, it's not like you're doing procedures. Where you have instruments and people that need, you know, cleansing, you know, there's even, you know, it's a shower, we get. I get physical therapists to go home and shower often, that, things like that too, partnering even with hospitals. You know, and showing them what we have as far as land, you know, the, the world's aging, the United States is aging, our community's aging. And then, you know, things like that, you know, a, a small day center even. You know, what you were saying before, maybe not where people live, but where they bust in, they have breakfast, lunch, and sometimes dinner, sometimes weekends. There's a need, and if they can keep it close to you, so people don't have to go far away to other communities with their elderly. You know, things like that, partnering with healthcare groups.
The biggest problem with any of that stuff is that, you know, we can allow for it, but it's attracting. It's how do you, how do you get things like that to come into our town? You know, we have to have some sort of. Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, it, it, it goes beyond marketing because it's also.
We gotta start with the concept somewhere.
Yeah, but I, but somebody's gotta bring that concept, not the planning board, it's gotta come from. Yeah, but I, but somebody's gotta bring that concept up, not the planning board, it's gotta come from some developer who wants to do that. And the problem is, is that one thing that, that Bethlehem Town should be really well known for is being against everything. So the problem is that when people, you know, so when some developer, you know, wants to do something like this, they're gonna spend a lot of money. Just to get the concept up and then come and present it. And, you know, for the most part, we're known as the No Town.
Not only that, but we're in the Highlands.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's, it makes it more expensive to try to develop it. And then on top of that, you've got the, the possible, the, the higher possibility of saying, no, this is a probably why.
May not, you know, things like that, either ecotourism or all that kind of things may not actually work, but. If we're talking about doing something, then explore. You know, explore, speak to some of the heads of, um, the healthcare, we've got plenty in this area, in Hunter Ten, Guar. Um, we've got further east that, that, you know, with people.
Yeah, great, Grace, Grace is right, you know, Hunter. So Hunter and St. Luke's are definitely, um, challenging each other in this territory, so there's opportunity there, there. The St. Luke's is building a, a new facility right next to the Hunter facility in Clinton Township. Uh, but we also have a county economic development office and it's, it's our own county, they, they do understand, uh. Who we are is Bethlehem Township versus, you know, say Clinton Township or, or Reddington, it's a little more developed. So, uh, they're good resources as well that we could talk to and they do come out, they reach out and ask what are some of the things that we think are acceptable, so. They've asked in the past, they've taken a tour here in, uh, in Bethlehem Township and, and we're somewhat limited because they're looking for either flex use space or. A one-time warehousing, but, uh, you know, I keep the conversation open, uh. But we can always go back and, and, and create a more of a concrete list of things that we're interested in, uh, and, and maybe. You know, talk to the county about, uh, when they go out for searches, uh, say Bethlehem's open for X, Y, and Z. And things that we've already identified as being appropriate.
And I remember even with the home-based business, Donna, committee, when we were doing that, we wanted to keep the flavor of our area. And it's a fine line you walk because you wanna keep the rural and, you know, you want people to be able to have their business, or perhaps a car or two that come to the business. You know, it's, that's, that's another hard one to, you know.
But I think, I think we, we, we came up with a pretty good, uh.
Oh, what, the old one, it was, the old one wasn't bad either, but.
Well, that's.
Times have changed now.
The one that we, that, yeah, the one that we came up with, I don't think it restricts anything that, um. That we'd wanna have in the town, so I don't think that it. Uh, I think that it allows anybody, you know, even, uh, I think you'd have no problem. With people who were just now, you know, like working on, from, on Zoom all the time. Uh, you know, that's not, that, that, you know, a home-based business guided by the way we set it up. You know, it allows.
It sure does.
So.
No, I didn't mean that, I just said that, you know, there is, like, with concerns with parking, especially people that have people coming into the house. We're doing things and that, that's where, that was the, you know, real, um. Not tricky, but you really had to think about that.
I know, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm sitting there thinking what, what the strengths of this town will be. Writing down what they are, you know, I mean, farming is a huge thing, um. There's gonna be others, I mean, there's options for, you know, for better breakfast, but it's, it's getting people here. And I'm just, if, if we, we need to use what we have, we have farms, we have someone who's good with trees. You know, who happens to have a business in, in, in town, there's, I don't see why we can't take that. You know, you have various farms and specialize in some, some of the different things where you can.
And make that a draw?
Make that a draw, so, so, so we can go to the county and say Bethlehem Township has, like, so, so for instance, every. Every year, um. Hundred county gives away little sapling trees. You know, and you get seven, ten trees or whatever it was, I bet if you found out how many of those trees are still alive today. It's gonna be one in a hundred, because nobody knows how to take care of it. But if, you know, again, I'm saying Phil can still grow trees for a living, as he does. If a month before those, that, that whole program comes out, or two months before the program comes out, it goes at, you know. That his farm is, you know, and he's gonna go through, how to properly plant, take care of it, and, you know. They get, uh, you know, twenty-five dollars per person.
You've been willing to do that?
But, but basically do something, I mean, we have a lot of towns that are in this.
Yes.
And, and so, and I, I just, and that's, you know, we have, you know, we have, we have. Regular farms that do produce, and, and so, how many people wanna start, you know, gardens at home? And in, in an area where we have deer. And so you get the people that are doing it professionally and making money to go out, and again, they all get together, you know. Say six different farms and six different specialties, and you all work together, discuss it, have different times, different weekends. And, and different events. And like, we don't have a whole bunch of, I don't even think we have any wineries at all in town, I mean, they're on board. But nothing in Bethlehem.
Think so.
But yet, but. That's not, that's Alhambra.
Iron Bed?
Yeah, Iron Bed, that's Alhambra, so, so, but, but that concept.
I don't.
Everybody who's a wine drinker, you know, except my wife, everybody. Everybody who drinks wine goes to all of these batteries to different vineyards. And there's a following, you know, and, and, and so, I just, we've discussed it for years and we, you know, paused on a lot of. On that, I, I know that is interesting, but nothing really sticks. And, and instead of saying, well, you know, well, this, we have a problem, 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 let's, let's, let's look at what we, we do. And come up with a way to, to use that, and I mean, we tried for a couple of years, you know, we, we have a gorgeous park. Can we incorporate that in, and?
Got a house.
We have a house that could be. I mean, there's a growth, there's a growth potential.
One thing that we have to.
But we gotta get people moving.
But one thing we have to bear in mind though is what is a rate of, okay? We do not charge a sales tax, the town does not get a sales tax from everything that gets sold in town. The only place that we get our tax base is from the value of the, of, of the improvements on land.
But we as a town could add that in, if it ends up.
Add what?
As a, a local tax.
A, a sales tax?
No, not sales tax, it, it could be, again, if we had hotels, motels here, we can institute a, a city tax, we could. I'm not saying that we should go there, but.
I, 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 I think.
But we need to do something to, to get people coming to the town.
Yeah.
And once you have people coming to the town, then other people start using their brains, it's a ways that they can mix them up. Which will be developed, and, you know, I just, we gotta move and do something. Not just kind of every year.
So, in keeping with our farming practices and. The fact that, you know, a building, a large square footage building is the, is, is what we make our money on as far as taxes go. Um, we should consider allowing growhouses in Bethlehem Township. Cannabis program, because that pays a lot of tax. And that is something, you know, except for the smell, which, you know, you have the, you, you can certainly filter out. Um.
You tell that to White House, they drive that twenty-two, with all the filters.
The problem with that, I would say, your best growing inland way of.
Exactly. Exactly, well, yeah, because, I mean, again, if it was being grown outside in the open. Bethlehem gets, I think, under the cannabis rules, you are allowed to, to get some kind of money from that, you, you can charge some taxes for that.
Two, two, two percent local tax.
Right, but the real money is in a big building that is, that is, that is built and designed specifically.
I've been looking at, uh, holding out these greenhouses. Now they have these, like, dense shade greenhouses, they're made. Especially if you grow marijuana. They're, they're called, I think they're called blackout.
Yeah.
So instead of having clear, they put clear plastic on it, underneath is black, so you go inside, it's dark, and they control like.
Yeah. They're all, all, all that, and especially all that improvement that gets done to that building. That's something that is property tax.
Yeah, if the, if the greenhouse is less than thirty feet wide, you can't tax it.
But, but they're not gonna, they're not gonna make it less than thirty feet wide, they're gonna make it, they're gonna wanna make a big footprint. But again, it may not be something for Bethlehem Township, but it's just, it's something that we gotta keep in mind as to. As to what sort of things we can actually pass. And I think that, you know, that, that means a building, so if we're talking, you know, if we could do something as far like Grace was talking about with, uh. With, with medical or even, you know, uh, uh, senior assisted living.
Day center.
Day centers, things like that, I think that, that works well, but I think, you know, we were talking about this a lot, twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. And, you know, but there was a lot of talk, I mean, we had people talking about making mattresses at their property using goose down. And that, wouldn't that be a great business with them, it would be a great business for the town, but it would bring in no rateable, because you'd have to. Basically be on a farm that they're putting this together, and there's nothing to, to add, uh, tax on. Remember that farms are negatively, uh. Negatively impact taxes because they get farmland assessment, so that, you know, we, you're not getting as much.
You're not getting kids going to schools.
Yes.
You know, there's a positive to, to have.
Well, it's just, it's tying up a lot of land, is what it's doing, but it's not, it's not bringing in a lot of money.
You get farmland assessment, not on your house.
We're exactly not on the house, but, but everywhere else.
So one of the notes that they brought up, um, in the study was, you know, the population and the number of kids is actually significantly down. And I'm, I'm not involved in schools anymore, but I know they really shrunk what's going on down at Hop. Um, to the point where they've actually talked about Hop, was that, did that be something that you could convert into? Either an indoor farm stand, something like that, to get people looking into, or a daycare? For seniors or something like that, you know, was that something that could be used?
The only thing is that you have to really think, uh, some towns have really gotten bid. Because they sold off the, um, buildings of schools. And, and towns go through cycles too, where aging will bow and whatnot. And we as a town, that's a very, very good idea, but. Personally speaking, with things that I've seen that happen in other towns, I mean, we've got the, we have to really think about it and. Really seek at those studies with people, the way the towns age out. And then the.
But that's in there. Yeah, that kind of shows that, and you know. Being on the planning board early on, you know, I remember when the town was basically under the attack by the law. Right, I mean, people were building property left and right, and the school, because everybody who moved in had.
By, by, by several towns.
Yeah, the, the school was massive and they expanded the schools based on that massive slope which stopped. In fact, it turned and it's now going down the other way. And the thing that's happening now is, you know, some people move out sooner than later, but now you start. Now that we're not building anymore, you're starting to get into this nice steady churn where, you know, it's this. Where instead of having spikes, you start to level out at approach some equilibrium. Um, so, I, I don't know if we should be as concerned about that, you know, that's something we could talk to Megan about. Um, but you know, while I look at the data, that's something that I see is happening when I look at, and just even the neighbors or the people, I've, I've even seen seniors now. Moving in here. Um, I'm seeing people without children moving in because they wanted to get away from the city, you know, this, they're considering this as a retirement. Getting away from the crowds and getting out to nature, which again, goes back to driving, why are we all here, it's nature, it's the farms, it's the wildlife. It's the ecotourism.
Right, which comes back to the point, like, I, I get the idea of ratables. But, wow, a lot of the people that, that I associate with, they would rather pay a little more taxes than have that, that's why they move. This is, this is a, a desired place to live for the solitude, for the little bit more property, and we're talking, let's develop, develop, develop. Potentially, and I don't know that, again, I don't know, I'm just brainstorming, I don't know that our community really wants it, wants it, right? I think they, I, most people I talk to would rather pay a little more taxes to have what we have. Rather than whether it's warehouses or truck stops or whatever, I mean, I know that our town would want that. And I don't know that we have the infrastructure to even support that.
I agree.
Some, you know, the thing is, some of the data from the, that we looked at, it, you know, I did the, the master plan study, talked about them, perhaps for, for the town and how. Less people are spending time outside of the township, just with things like work, there's more people who work from home now. People commute less actually, um, on average, so they're, they're spending more time in the township, which again, I think that creates. More of that desire for amenities in, in the town, but again, that's like small amenities, it's not.
Dry cleaner?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I don't know if you need a dry cleaner anymore, because no one here is going to.
From a general school board standpoint, to answer your question, we are looking at putting everyone in college and, uh. Uh, uh, box just. It's, there's, you know.
Yeah, it's pretty new.
The heating system in there, the, the, the parks.
Yeah.
Things and more, it's, so that, that is the, it's gonna take several years to get there, but the long-term plan is. A few additional classrooms up at the other school and then move all the kids into all.
Yeah, probably the best use for that school would be apartments, because, you know, the, the way that's laid out, it's all up and down, there's, there's.
I don't think that's septic getting in.
Yeah, well, that, that's actually, that has a, that has a.
It's got a stream running back and to.
But that, that has a magifis permit on it, that's actually a, uh, that, that's one of our only package plans.
One too, right?
In the, in the town.
In China schools.
Yeah, so that, that's the only thing, and again, I mean, you're not gonna turn that into an apartment complex that has fifty residents living in it. You're gonna get maybe five or six.
For, for four and a half schools.
I mean, you know, that, all, there's, there's a million. There's a million options, but Steve is absolutely right, twenty-five years ago, when we were being hammered by development. You know, left and right, development coming up everywhere. You know, all we were looking to do was balance that building of homes. With bringing in some kind of ratables to offset that, those costs of all the schools and everything else that was, that was coming. With the, that, and nobody wanted it, that's why there's nothing, you know, after twenty-five years, we did nothing. And, you know, we had.
And we were really bad now. But you know, Steve is right, and you're on it, uh, in the sense that the town is sort of growing slowly, is in transition. And we should look at serving what's here, small businesses. You know, odds and ends, we should look, what can we do at that scale, instead of thinking warehousing and industrial? Let's see what if you serve a community, community, that's fair, the residents need certain things, and I don't think. I hate having to go out of town and getting set a new basis. You know, we should look at what we have and how to best serve that community.
And if I did, we have to.
Mayor, you, you've spoken with Mark Salick, right, that's who you've been dealing with at the county? I know he's.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, well, yeah, Mark's been, like I say, he, you know, he's touring the town a few times, then he gets opportunities, he emails them out. A lot of them are larger scale, so, you know, usually I'll reply that, that they're most likely not appropriate for what we have, based on, on size or scale. But, uh, but again, he, he does bring in, um. You know, scouting, I, I, for, you know, commercial realtors and, and take them on tours throughout the county, so, uh, it would be nice for them to, to know. You know, kind of things that are acceptable, so it's a good, you know, it's a somewhat valuable discussion we're having tonight, but, uh, eventually we should probably make it a little more formal so that the county. Can be, be more effective as a partner.
Yeah, he'd probably come out and talk to people too, and, you know, if he knew exactly what the township was looking for. You know, could keep his eyes open as opposed to the other way, um, but he's just, he's done a lot since, you know, over the past. Six or so years for the county as a whole, and, um, I think, I think probably more so in the denser, more developed areas, but. Um, he's, he's got great knowledge, so.
He, he, he does, uh, and, and a great understanding of the state and some connections and, and, and yeah, he's done a great job with what, you know, consider the main street towns, but, but like the discussion. We've had here, he's also done a great job creating, uh, you know, the five seventy-nine trail, which, which we could benefit from. We've had here, he's also done a great job creating, uh, you know, the five seventy-nine trail, which which we could benefit from, comes, you know, right, right next to Bethlehem Township. Through part of it, so there are opportunities uh, that we that we can discover.
Awesome.
Anything else, anybody?
The blue, I started with these blue folders are gonna be um, returned to me, you can leave the documents in it if you don't wanna take them home. But you leave the the folder that, every time you see a blue folder, that's gonna be an application or something that we're reviewing specifically that is resident-driven. Um, but I literally have only enough for us, so that every other one in this building is vanilla, so. I wanted the blue ones, I scrounged those, don't take them home, please. And we only have two more meetings left, guys. So we have the twenty-seventh and then the seventh, December eleventh.
Before I make my motion to close, I have a request. We need a better speaker. This conversation, so, something that's a little clearer. And I think it's echoing against the other one there. Hello, are you hearing? I mean, we're back into the, the basic acoustics for Zoom and. The meetings, and I'm sure that.
Phil, are you having trouble hearing or understanding, you know, me and Cara?
It's like muffled.
Okay.
From this here.
It could be, I mean, I use my headphones, but that, that other larger TV that we have in there too, has probably larger speakers and and we could probably use a different speaker other than the uh. Owl speaker, we just use to speak the the owl uh, video portion, so. Uh, we can, we can look at that. Full, full, full bowl surround sound.
I I I hear it fine from here, because we're not.
All the speakers are usually behind.
Either the back, yeah, and so we're looking at the back of the TV right now.
Yeah, but the the sound's coming out of the owl here.
Yeah, the owl.
It's the owl, yeah.
Yeah, it's coming out of the.
I gotta hurt down here in care.
Right.
She had a little more head.
So it could be the other side, I don't know, I found that Zoom is not.
Well, even sometimes on the receiving end too, sometimes on the receiving end, some meetings when we're having Zoom, some were fine and then others. Were all broken apart and um, I just, I talked about that with, um, what's his name, from um. Van Leeu, he was, yeah, oh my god, he he was saying the same thing, it's like a head of this.
I think it's more like the the speakers that people, the microphones that people have, either their laptop or their computer. You know, maybe it's a good speaker or a good microphone, maybe it's not, you know, a lot of people. Go on, look like headsets that have a microphone right in front of them now, I'm sure you can hear that really well.
The internal mics, a lot of those laptops are not. Okay, just a book, both in the book, yeah, second. Good night, guys.
Night, thank you.